I'm going to call the BUHS six meeting for Monday, March 5th, 2018 to order at 7:03. And we'll start, as always, with, well, before we go into that, just real quick, just to let everybody know, we do have an executive session that we have to go into after the meeting. And I will read more about that when we go into a better one, to let everyone know that we will have an executive session. So, starting with the clerk's report, is there approval of the minutes of February 5th?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any additions, deletions, corrections we need to make to those minutes?
Just under communications, a letter was received by members of the Brownville Town Finance Committee regarding the timely posting of minutes.
That was the TANY committee?
Well, I know what it was, but I, it says it was received by members of the Town Finance Committee regarding the timely posting of minutes, so actually, wouldn't it be received from, and I'm asking because I can't remember, I know what it was about.
It was received from the TANY committee by the finance, by our finance committee?
Oh, the one?
Anything to do with the Town Finance Committee?
Okay, well, that's what it said, members of Brownville Town Finance Committee, that's why I was a little confused.
So, it should say the BUHS Finance Committee?
Maybe I got confused.
Okay, well, I just, I couldn't remember exactly how it all played out, I know what the letter was about. So, maybe it should say by members of the Finance Committee regarding, because we got a letter about that issue, so I would request that we just change that to members of the Finance Committee, unless I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
Okay.
The BUHS Finance Committee?
Yep. A BUHS Finance Committee.
Okay.
All right. Any other additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? Seeing none. All those in favor with approving the minutes as amended? Anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Foes to your tensions? None, okay. Other, speaking of communications, are there any communications that came to any board members? Seeing none. Is there anything else for the clerk's report? Okay. All right. So, moving on to recognition of groups and individual visitors, we do have a visitor. Would you like to introduce yourself and let us know why you're here?
Sure. John Di Matteo, I'm a construction trades teacher at the Wyndham Regional Career Center, TIC Building, separate, just here to observe, check everything out, learn something new.
Great.
Yeah.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so let's start with Finance, Building and Transportation.
Okay, Finance, Net.
February 7th.
It was, yeah, just, just after the last meeting, February 7th?
After the last board meeting, but before the annual meeting.
Yeah, and we approved warrant numbers 1127, 1129, 1130, 1131, 1132, 1133, 1134, and 1135 in the amount of $365,811.66. We also approved warrant numbers 1136, 1138, 1140, 1141, 1142, 1143, 1145, 1146, 1147, 1148, 1149, 1151, 1152, and 1153 in the amount of $450,428.80. And I thought that we had approved some payrolls, but they're not on the agenda, so...
Yes, we did, we approved our payrolls from January 5th and January 19th.
Okay, so, the January 5th payroll was the amount of $493,975.57, and the January 19th payroll was $485,816.7. Did we, any other big business?
Well, we had a few other things that we talked about, getting ready for the final run toward the annual meeting, and spent a little time on that. We discussed the Brownville Town Finance Committee's report on the fiscal 19, fiscal year 19, our budget, they issued a report on that. And then we spent some time on general overview of student assessment results, graduation rates, SAT scores, and some data trends that are associated with this budget. And then we also reviewed a cost containment initiative that Frank Rucker's group, the Association of School Business Officials, had put together to present to legislators and administrators in Montpelier on possible ways to contain costs in education. And the next meeting will be March 15th, which is 10 days from today.
Will we have another meeting before then? I'm just trying to think of recons, because at least one of your members is threatening out to be suspended tonight.
And will not be here.
We will have three Finance, there is, there is not another meeting scheduled at this point, up until the 15th, so there will be three, temporarily, there will be three Finance Committee members, because Michael, assuming everything goes in order, tonight in Vernon, will be with us still until the end of...
Oh, he's not around?
No, no, but he, he's indicated to me that he will be, because of the lapse and the statute, things like that, that he, it looks like tonight, he's going to get appointed to represent Vernon on this board until the end of June, and he's going to accept that appointment. So, that's, so he'll be the, because we have to have a Vernon rep until the end of June, and he's, he's willing to stay on in that role, so that's probably happening as we speak. And he's indicated that he'd stay on Finance Committee and stuff like that.
Well, on that, is going to be leaving on the 1st of July 2018, or 1st of July 2015?
I'm not 100% sure, to be honest, and I think that's something we have to finish figuring out.
I believe they said 18.
Yeah, I think, I think at 18 is when, because the, when the numbers changed, it thinks, it changed everything, so. Anything else from Finance, Building and Transportation? Okay. WCSU Finance Committee?
Has not met.
Planning and Policy?
Has not met.
Teacher Curriculum Committee?
We met this evening at 6 o'clock, and we spent half the time talking about the Latin program, and the, the plans for this coming year, and, and beyond, and the way the current budget is, is the Latin 2 and 3 will be offered, but not Latin 1. So, we talked about, you know, is it the demise of Latin at BUHS, or is there a way to, to keep it beyond, and, you know, we all recognize the importance of Latin, and it's a question of whether we have the resources to keep it going, and whether that's, you know, given the limited resources we have, where to go, so it's a conversation that is ongoing, and we really appreciate hearing about the program. Then we spent some time reviewing some 1% fund proposals, and then at the end, Keith gave us an update on what we've been calling the peak step updates, but it's, it's not, it's not, from what I understand, what a peak plan is not exactly step, but looking at possibilities of keeping a peak-like program within multi-tiered systems of support, and not just at the middle school, but extending it into the high school. So, we just got a quick update on, on the planning for that, and I'm sure we'll get updates as that goes on.
Excellent, thank you. BAMS Committee?
The BAMS Committee has not met.
WRCC?
No.
So, is there a motion to approve consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, moving on to administrative reports. Why don't we start with Central Office, and Marissa, Marissa's filling in for us, for the Central Office this evening, because Lyle and Frank are both in Vernon at their town meeting, because their town meeting is tonight, so Marissa's, is a guest appearance with us tonight, so why don't we start with her?
Sure. I would just let you know that we have three retirements at BUHS for special education, and ads are in the paper, and so we'll be starting that process hopefully soon, if we're doing and filling those positions. I don't have anything specific from Central Office, but that's my, a little bit.
Excellent. Let's move down to the person.
All right, thank you, Ricky. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I have a few items I want to share with you tonight. First off, our future business leader of, leaders of America group will be attending their spring leadership conference, March 19th to 21st, at Lake Maury Resort, and this is their, their spring state conference, it's called, and 18 students will be participating. Let me read those students' names. The Matthias Arregio, Corey Choke, Shaq, Shane Seer, Melanie Dow, Tyler Eisen, Major, Danielle Flood, Megan Farret, Alec Gamashi, Callie Gauthier, Anna Jutras, Senator Kennedy, Peyton Lawrence, Andy Lynn, Josh Nordheim, Victoria Packard, Rachel Parker, Orange Stone, and Gavin Wade. And these students have an opportunity to place first, and will have then an opportunity to go to nationals for during the summer months, July, I think they're held, to compete against their peers across the United States, which we usually send anywhere from three to seven students, so it's a great opportunity for our students to grow and learn.
Is this FBLA?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And look forward to, I'll be going up and watching them compete, and it's always nice to support them in that way as well. The WRCC dance program just came back from, last week, from the National Dance Festival in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and some highlights that the students shared with me and their teacher, Jamie Garen, were that they had a great time networking with students across the country, and also from Australia and Taiwan, students attended this festival, so it's a very popular festival throughout the year that schools participate in. They also enjoyed the diversity of classes and training they received, varied style of classes offered at the festival, broad range of those styles, which also offer our students a difference of how they process the information, assess movement, and memorize movement combinations. They loved the positive energy that all the participants talked about, they were really involved with their craft and their vocation of dancing, they really liked being around that for two and a half days. And the student work, they were impressed by other students attending the festival that were showcased in the evening performances, and that some of our students also received summer program scholarships to attend some university programs this summer, and those students were Ellery Whitman, she has a full summer scholarship at Long Island University during her junior or senior year. Brandon Delmain, vested interest from Liverpool University, over the next year is 90% scholarship for tuition for four years. Mercedes Thomas had callbacks for interest from Bellhaven University and Winthrop University, and Chayrab Malidi from Nazareth and Winthrop University, and one of those schools gave her a full four-year scholarship. And Audrey Lamarter had called back a possible scholarship from Almond College. So, great news from these dancers, and it's a great opportunity for students to travel outside of Brownville, that one usually get a chance.
I was wondering if I could just make my regular plug right here for those students, if they're interested in the AIM scholarship, the applications for that will be coming out real soon here, so dance definitely falls under the auspice of arts, so it's a good opportunity for the students if they haven't had full coverage, some students do have full coverage, but it's a great opportunity for kids from BUHS and the careers.
Appreciate it. Last week, for two days, Wednesday and Thursday, we had the opportunity to hear from our SRA Southern Regional Education Board consultant, Amy Wyatt. She is a consultant that creates, helps schools create career pathways within the program studies in our school systems. She gave a wonderful presentation to all of our area counselors of our sending schools and middle schools, and it was a wonderful presentation regarding the importance of why students need to start a career pathway in the middle school ages, to lay out a foundation of studies, is what a program, what a career pathway really sums up to be. She also presented to, the same presentation to area principals and superintendents, so that was a well-thought-out event, and we received some great feedback from that, and Steve is going to be hearing from me very soon on how we can work together and move forward with this initiative. She also worked with four WRCC staff members to really hone their career pathways within their program, and those teachers were Mary Beth Cornell, our business teacher, Jim Valier, our auto instructor, Amy Anthony, our advanced manufacturing and engineering instructor, and, excuse me, Melanie Deschard, our new tech math teacher, where she is going to assist all of our program teachers with implementation of tech math skills, and how she can help our students in, within their programs, within the math environment. So, we're very excited to move forward and work with SREB, to continue work, relationship to hopefully answer some questions, answer those age-old questions that students ask, why are we here, and I hope they, hopefully they don't ask those questions when they're juniors and seniors within our programs, is our goal. We are underway with our sending school tours, we have two set for this week, I want to thank Ann Dorn, she has been instrumental in preparing these and organizing with our sending school counselors, and it's a, it's a tough task to organize this many students, and especially during this time of year with snow days and snow in the forecast and rescheduling these types of events, it's, so I give her a lot of kudos for organizing this, and also our WRCC staff, because they do kind of stop what they're doing for the day with, with tours, and showcase their program with their class, with their students, with incoming students, to try to educate them what's going on in their programs, so thanks for all that they do. Our road shows are almost wrapping up, we have two left for Twin Valley and Lynn and Gray, and they will be in the next couple of weeks out of BAMS multipurpose room, and we had BUHS last week sophomores, and I got to say, they were really respectful, the students at BUHS, for the show, so kudos to Steve and all his teachers for, you know, setting those standards, very high standards, it was really nice to present, the students have been doing an amazing job, it's out of their comfort zone for most of the students, they're up on stage, they're presenting, they have craft, and they're really confident and comfortable, so they'll be recognized at the end of the school year, all the students have been participating in this program, new, new this year, so hats off to those students, and also the teachers for providing the students for the road show as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Excellent, please. All right, let's move down to the high school.
Sure. First, I'd like to give kudos to Bob Kramsky, Steve Rice, Shell Page, and everybody else that worked, including the students who worked so hard on the Mall of La Mancha, that was presented right before February break, as usual, they've done, they did a fantastic job. It was difficult subject matter, and they handled it really well, and I was very impressed with the performances, and really impressed with the music, I know some board members were there and I was there, it's just, it's amazing to hear what they can do musically. And along those same lines, Steve Rice wants us to know that 11 BUHS students have been accepted into the Allstate Musical Festival Honors Ensemble, and they were selected based on auditions that took place in January, they'll be traveling to Essex Junction in May to rehearse and then perform with other musicians from throughout the state, and locally, we'll have the All District Band Night on March 13th coming up right around the corner, and those students also should look at the AIM scholarship. I got it. In sports, I'm really thrilled to announce that the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team won the Marble Valley League Championship in Classical Freestyle and Relay, they're an outstanding group of students, and both the Boys and Girls Team won second place overall in the Division One State Championship, they were edged out by Mount Mansfield, and, you know, the Relay team did great in both cases, and I'm especially proud of Isaac Fritz Egan, who is in my advisory, he is actually representing Vermont as we speak in Utah at the Junior Olympics, and so Isaac's been an amazing athlete for four years, and it's kind of cool to see him actually skiing in Utah with some of the best in the country. I'm also pleased that Boys and Girls Ice Hockey both went to the playoffs, they have been eliminated since, since they've started, but they both had strong seasons, as did the Girls Basketball Team, who actually upset Mount Anthony in the quarterfinals, but then lost North Country in the quarterfinal round, so kudos to them, of course, we're getting ready for spring sports in just a couple of weeks, I think I saw some coaches out trying to shovel snow off the baseball field already, but it will go soon enough.
Maybe.
Some interesting news is our prom committee has been working hard to select a venue for the prom, and this group of juniors and their advisors have actually gotten a great deal, I'm going to say it wrong, Anoria Winery in Halifax, and they will have the prom there this year, it's not in the winery, obviously, it's in a separate facility, I've seen pictures of the facilities, it's, it's stunning, it's a beautiful site. One of the issues that, that presents is it presents an issue of, of transportation, and this group of students and their advisors are going to organize a bus, so students will drop off and pick up here at BUHS, so it's part, it's included in the ticket price. So, you know, I was initially very concerned about having a prom that far away, but they said, you know, we want to try this, we want to organize transportation, so, you know, I got to give Liz Lebec and Karen Trinoff a lot of credit for, for doing that and getting it organized. Parent-teacher conferences are this Thursday, I'd say rain or shine, but that's not true, we'll see what happens if, if the weather doesn't hold. As we did last semester, we're using the online scheduler, based on feedback from parents last year and teachers, we are changing the length of the meetings from 10 minutes to 7 minutes, and we're also shortening the period of time in between conferences to increase more passing time, and so we're going to see how that, that works again this Also, since the Florida shooting, I've been meeting with students, we've been having class meetings with ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders, and part of that meeting is intended to review with our students what we have here for reactive safety steps, and I use the word reactive very deliberately, you know, what do we do if we have a violent intruder on campus, and, you know, we talk about Alice, we talk about the steps of the Alice protocol that we use, we talk about resources that we have to support students in the community, our own resources as well as community resources, but all of that reactive, those reactive steps are great, but as I mentioned to the students, where this really resides and where it's really effective is for students also to be proactive, and we have a long history at BUHS of students, when they see a classmate who's hurting, whether contemplating self-harm or something else, they tell us, and they let us know when they have a classmate that's hurting, and so I reminded the students of that and asked them to continue to do that, if they are concerned, that they let us know, let trusted adult know, so we can work with that student, get them the support they need. One of those meetings was, was snowed out, but we'll continue to do those meetings with juniors and seniors who are left, but it's been very positive, and the sophomores and freshmen that I've spoken to have approached me in the hallway and had to say, thank you for, for reminding us of what we have in place, and thank you for, for hearing us and letting us, you know, kind of approach people. I wasn't at the last meeting, I'm sorry, did we, you get any retirements at that meeting?
I'm trying to recall.
I don't think you did, so I do, I do want to kind of bring up, actually, four retirements, but, but first, I do want to recognize, as Marissa pointed out, we do have several retirements from Special Ed, and first, Peg Brown is retiring, she's the 712 Special at BUHS and BAMS, you know, Peg stepped into a tough role a few years ago, has done a nice job of advocating for kids and advocating for staff, and has really done a nice job, so I would ask that the board accept Peg's resignation. Do you want to do them all?
I move we accept Peg's, Peg Brown's resignation with regret.
Sorry.
Diane Leary is another special educator who...
Let's just deal with this real quick, because it's up there, all right?
Oh, I thought we just did, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't, we...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sorry about that. Diane Leary has also been a longtime special educator at BUHS, she's worked with a lot of students, and in recent years has been doing, has been working supervising parent professionals, Diane Leary's also retired, I asked the board to accept that.
I move we accept the resignation, the retirement of Diane Leary with regret. You did say retire in this case?
Yes, retirement.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Last from Special Ed, Barbara McLaughlin, who, it's funny, I worked with her when she was a case manager, and I was a teacher with several students, and I'm always struck by her ability to advocate for a student, but also give me as a teacher the plain speak that I needed, sometimes it was just a little smack to say, you know, think about the student again, and so I learned a lot from Barbara, she taught me a great deal about how to work with students and how to consider how students learn, so I owe her a great personal debt, I would ask that the board accept her retirement as well.
I move we accept the retirement of Barbara McLaughlin with regret.
All in favor?
Aye.
And last, but not least, Kevin Martell, our social studies department head, is not retiring, but he's resigning, he's moving back up north to be close to family. He's moving back up north to be close to family. Kevin has come in and done a phenomenal job of helping the social studies department shape the proficiency movement and kind of help focus them on writing standards that are usable and workable. And he's also a phenomenal teacher. He's done a great job teaching diversity. He's also equally adept at teaching RAP, Government courses. And he's done a great job with all of those courses. He is a great source of wisdom and we will miss him dearly in the social studies department.
He is the liaison to the Governor's Institute.
He is.
We need to be one of those.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I move acceptance of Kevin Martell's designation with regret.
Proven second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Before we move on to high school, just, I'm a Rotarian and this past week, Bill Holliday came with three students from the high school to talk about the Tracks on Tracks class and the radio show that they did. And they did a phenomenal job. I don't know if any of the board members have heard, heard the radio show that was on 8:30 in the morning on Saturday mornings. I heard about it. I missed the first one, but then I didn't miss any of the other ones because they were that good. And the students did a wonderful job presenting to Rotary last week. So they, all three of those young ladies did a wonderful job presenting with Mr. Holliday. So it was wonderful.
Great, thank you.
I was just wondering, is there any organizational time around March 24th that has been, isn't that the date of the March in Washington?
That's on a Saturday.
Yes, I know, but I was wondering whether there's any organizational...
There has not been for March 24th. Right, moving to Bams.
Hi everyone. Just reporting on a few events coming up. Let's see, this Thursday evening is the middle school concert. Mr. Goodemo and I were debating whether this was the winter concert or the spring concert. But whatever the title is, it's 7:00 PM this Thursday and then there, there will be a show for our staff and students on Friday, Special Assembly. So you're all welcome to that concert. I always enjoy them a lot. Friday night, there is a dance, student dance. And for the first time in a while, I heard this was done in years past, but we're trying to spruce up some parent involvement. And so, we have hired a parent liaison, Junie Pereira, through some, some title funding. And Junie has been working with the parent group to create a parent social for this, for during the dance. So, parents can come and there's, there's some door prizes that have been donated by a few local businesses and, and we'll potluck with desserts and stuff, so we're looking forward to that. Monday, March 12th is our annual, we go up to Dover and we kind of pitch a table there and they send all their, like, fourth, fifth, sixth graders kind of come and check out the local schools and what everybody has to offer and hoping to attract as many Dover students as possible. And we've done, I wouldn't say it's necessarily that evening that does it. It's our great programming and, and staff and offerings at BAMS. But, we go up there and we meet parents and students and answer questions for them and it's a nice night, so we'll do that on the 12th. A few other events coming up. This is actually an invitation and any of you can email me if you're interested in this. The 19th, I'm going to meet with my leadership team after school from 3:30 to 5:00. And we're going to begin the process of reviewing our continuous improvement plan. And so that's essentially the new action plan. But it's, the continuous improvement plan is a new requirement by the state. No Child Left Behind was kind of left behind in place of, in, ESSA was, was replaced, Every Student Succeeds Act. And the way Vermont kind of complies with that is they require the schools to create a continuous improvement plan. And it's a template that's a little confusing at first, but we'll be talking about our priorities as a school, setting priorities, setting actions. We won't do it in that hour and a half, but we're going to begin that process and certainly it's appropriate to have a board member involved in that process. So, anybody's welcome and if, there'll be other meetings if, if we can't get anybody that date. But again, it's the 19th from 3:30 to 5:00. So if you have any interest, let me know. The 22nd, we have our, it's called our UFO Open Night, so open house, UFO, our exploratory classes, so phys ed, health, art, all of those classes, foreign, world languages. And they kind of put on a show downstairs in the school and parents, the current seventh and eighth graders come and their students show off some of their work, but also we invite the incoming sixth grade, so they can kind of see what happens in those classes. So it's a nice evening and we decided this year to combine the seventh grade, incoming seventh grade parent night that evening. So, we'll have that kind of open house. And then we're going to have an informational session for incoming seventh grade families, same evening. So, we found that a lot of current sixth grade families come to that, that evening. So, so those are events coming up. And just one thing I wanted to share with, oh, one other event. The 23rd and 26th are student-led conferences. So these will be for seventh grade students. These will be their first student-led conferences at BAMS. And so those are half-days and we're soliciting sign-ups for those. Right now, the eighth graders in the spring, our, our big picture plan for conferences, the eighth graders do an end-of-year type student-led presentation. So each team, they, I give some flexibility in how they do that. So, I'll report out on those when we get closer. And finally, something new that just happened last week and I just, two, two staff members stepped up and led a PLC, which is a professional learning community. And it was a, it was essentially a staff meeting, but the teachers had done some professional development on trauma in schools, childhood trauma. And they've taken coursework and they said, we'd really like to report out and, and kind of share what we've learned with the rest of the staff. So, it was really nice. They, they were so energetic. It was Jessica Montanieri and Jessica Irk. They're both teachers on Team Leo and they were very excited to prepare a little thing for our staff and, and people seemed to really enjoy it. So, I just wanted to share that out and give them some kudos for stepping up and helping out. That's all I have. Any questions?
I think I read somewhere that Dover was considering having a bus available to come to BAMS, BUHS this year. Did you hear about that?
Well, we, I've had some conversations with the Dover principal and with our business manager about what kind of options are there. And we, you know, so we're talking about varying options to support those students, but I, I'm not familiar with any newspaper.
I think this was from there as they were considering, maybe it was their budget, I'm not sure.
They contracted the mover right now to do, to do some of that.
Yeah.
But I think one of the concerns is that the mover may not be sufficient. So.
Well, that would be a positive thing.
Yeah. There's some things that really have to be thought out as far as, you can't set up special transportation just for one town to come, but there could be some type of regional stop in some of those local towns that come this way. So, yeah, I haven't seen what you're referring to though.
I think it was in the reformer.
Somebody else put their hand up?
No, just make sure it wasn't me. All right, under my report, just I wanted to just kind of have us, I know we did it at the annual meeting, but officially say goodbye to Ruth, who's leaving us after tonight's meeting, because she's not re-upping for another term with us. And also just to remind everybody that on March 19th, we'll have to have, this board will have to have a reorganizational meeting of whatever the makeup is, because in Rattlerboro, for instance, for the first time in a really long time, there's actually more, more people running than there are seats. So, that's kind of an exciting thing. So this board will definitely have a different makeup. And as I said earlier, Mike is going to continue to be our rep from Vernon until the end of June. So, that'll stay the same, but we'll see what happens. So, and just to remind everybody that tomorrow is voting day, Rattlerboro, and it's town meeting day everywhere else, so important thing.
Excellent. Is there any unfinished business? Under new business, we just have listed annual meeting follow-up. Is there any board members or administrators that have anything related to the annual meeting that they want to share or say?
It was slightly longer than has been the last few years. It was an hour and 20 minutes this year.
Was it really?
Yes.
Time-wise.
You don't have the, the numbers.
No, we never should get the numbers. How many?
We got, we got them kind of late. Tim kind of gave them up pretty late, but I don't remember.
The newspapers said there was 10.
Yeah. Huh?
The newspaper said there was 10.
Yeah, it was, it was actually, I think we get 100.
I think it was 100.
Yeah.
109 rings a mind. 109.
Yeah.
Pretty sparse.
Yeah.
That's more than I thought.
It was pretty sparse, yeah. But, yeah. But I just wanted to give anybody an opportunity to talk about it and if there's anything they wanted to say or...
Okay.
We think we all did. I think it was, I mean, we did, we did the work we needed to do ahead of time. Right. So, that's, under new business, it's been pointed out to me that we have not been going into executive session in an appropriate way. So, I have to read something and then we're going to go into executive session and I want to go in the other room so cameras can come out. Will there be action that will be happening? So don't need to be any action, so Ian, you can go ahead and break down and we're just going to come out to, to close the meeting.
I, I will...
If you want to hang around, you're welcome to.
I will leave the camera here, turn it off.
Yeah.
I can leave the room, you can use the room. And then I'll come in and just catch your coming back into...
Well, we know that because there's other people that don't need to be there because it's just, just Steve and Marissa, are you staying for this as well?
I guess so.
Okay, I think that's it, right?
I'm there.
Okay. All right, so, maybe we will just leave it, we'll just stay in the room. But, I'm going to go ahead and read what we need to be reading now. So, you know, I'm going to say that we're going to enter executive session in accordance with Vermont statute, VSA 313, we'll be entering executive session to consider number 10, municipal or school security or emergency response measures, the disclosure of which could jeopardize public safety. So we are going to go into executive session.
Do you want to just mention the people you're inviting?
Yes, so it'll be the board, as well as the high school principal, the BAMS principal, and Marissa Duncan-Holly from central office. And Michael, are you thinking?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Well, we'll invite Michael to stay as well, so, and the career center director. All right?
Seems we need a motion to do that, or do we...
No, we just need to go into executive session, I guess. All right? So we're going to go into executive session. Thank you all.
Ready?
All right, we just came back out of executive session after talking about school security. There's no action to be taken on that. So we're back in open session and is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that there be no other business of the day that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.